You know, they tried to get something that was, you know, not public chemicals and everything.
Not her?
No, no. It's not so much sugar.
What, what did you say?
That's the preservative thing. Have you ever had that prickly pear dressing from Bonfire?
No.
You know, try that sometime.
Well, you know, I haven't been down to Bonfire yet. I have to make it on my list.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If you do have the macaroni and cheese.
Macaroni and cheese. All their food is tremendous, really.
I've heard, I've heard good, good things about it.
Yeah, and the, but the salad dressing that they use, and they're the only ones that have it.
Okay, so it's...
It's prickly pear dressing, yeah.
How's dressing?
I'm getting the ingredients together for the recipe.
Okay.
I think I have to buy it by the gallon.
I bought butter from there once. I said, "Your butter is so good, can I just buy it?"
Yeah.
And they sold me a cup of butter.
Well, when you've got more than one person in the house, you can spread that around.
Oh, no, it was all for me.
All for you.
I'm a big butter fan.
Like Oprah and her bread.
We actually have two windows here. I didn't notice it. It's light when I come in. It's not dark.
I know. It just seems sunlit.
You have a new door. Daylight meeting, yeah.
New. I'm worried. That should be correct, because I wasn't vice chair.
I don't remember that being so hard to read. Can you see it?
Uh-uh.
I was thinking the same thing yesterday.
Well, of course, we have it in front of us. It doesn't matter.
My problem. Congratulations, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations to you, too.
I think it's time here, folks.
What have you been doing on these nice days?
We've got a couple minutes.
Oh, wow. So sour.
I'm seeing...
We'll go off the computer. We got one minute.
I had lunch with my red hat guru.
The computer never lies, right? It's on the internet.
I attended a Bible study. My brother has found that he can't live in this altitude, so he's got to get rid of tools. He's got a barn full of tools.
Well, I agree.
And I can't help him.
This whole primary process.
That's my day. But it has been nice being out in it. It's gorgeous.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, this is perfect.
I decided...
Next week, though, we're going to have snow.
Well, I always feel guilty about not getting some snow sent. I figured, no, just take two days and work outside and have fun.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yeah, we all have enough work to do, but it's been so nice.
They need to take Trump and run...
It's like a health tonic, you know? Get enough vitamin D.
He's the only one that can walk them anyways.
I, I don't, I don't think if they ran Trump, I don't think the Republicans would win.
Got a minute to go.
Yeah, maybe.
Because, because what will happen is, generally, this debate...
The two clocks are three minutes apart.
Pardon me?
The two clocks, they're three minutes apart.
People maybe are looking for a cowboy like that.
Well, they go with according to this, and I'll just...
Yes.
Called order for the regular meeting, March 2016, of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Annie, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Annie Lane.
Present.
Florence Sloan.
Here.
Michael Bacon.
Present.
Julie Vander, Van Wolfen.
Here.
Claude Baker.
Yep.
Gary Pasiak.
Here.
Charles Merritt.
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action to approve the February 2nd, 2016 meeting minutes. Anybody have any comment?
I move that the February 2nd, 2016 meeting minutes be approved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, staff reports.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Wow, that's loud, isn't it?
Works good.
All right. Good evening, Chair, and members of the commission. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm just here to give you a short presentation on some upcoming amendments to our sign code that we're considering. This is going to be an ongoing process probably into July or August, so I just want to give you an introduction to it tonight. No action required, but I do want to brief you on what we're doing and what we've done thus far. So, this is what we've done thus far. Our process has been a lot of research and a lot of outreach. So, the first thing we did was looked at a groundbreaking Supreme Court case called Reed v. Gilbert. In Reed v. Gilbert, essentially what happened was a church called the Good News Bible Church or Good News Presbyterian Church sued the town of Gilbert for, for some of the restrictions in their sign ordinance. Those restrictions were basically the amount of time the sign could be out prior to a special event. And after going all the way to the Supreme Court, no one really thought this was going to be a big case, and it ended up hitting the Supreme Court, and the, the church won. And the church basically had the argument that by regulating signs based on the content that is on their face, they are essentially violating the First Amendment. So, they're restricting free speech by restricting the amount of time that that free speech could be put before the people of the town. So, basically, what, what the Supreme Court said is that the, the town must have a compelling interest because this is a sign, a sign issue, and sign issues are always subject to what they call the strict scrutiny test. This is the most stringent standard of judicial review, and, and the town of Gilbert could not prove that they had a compelling interest in limiting the size, or, I mean, in limiting the time that temporary signs could be held up. So, they had a different size, a different time limit, and different standards for different types of temporary signage. They had political signs that could be 32 square feet, and they could be there for up to three months after the election. But then they had a 20-foot, a 20-square-foot sign for special events, and, and this church was regulated under the special event signage. And, and having no compelling interest, the town of Gilbert lost the case, and every jurisdiction around the country has been looking at their sign code since then to make sure that they're in compliance with that. What we've found is that we're not, and every other jurisdiction that I've ever looked at is not in compliance with that. Generally, what, what they do is they have a, a different provision for political signs, real estate signs, special event signs, and, and these all end up being different signs, different sizes, different lengths of time, and if you had to take that to court, you would lose. So, we're looking at changing our, our sign code to be compliant with that, but also to be a little bit more business-friendly. Ruth led this, this group down this road in June of 2015, I believe, and very close to completing the process when this Supreme Court case came down. So, we were almost done with the entire process, and then, and then the Supreme Court got us. So, so we're starting all over again. And this time, we're, we're trying to put together a process that's very inclusive, and this is the process that I've, I've kind of come up with, which is to develop a survey instrument. I've submitted the survey instrument to the Chamber of Commerce. They're sending it out in their March newsletter. Everybody who is a member of the Chamber of Commerce takes these surveys, so we'll get feedback from the chamber. It's a survey monkey survey, which means that it's done online. All of the results are recorded and broken down by yes and no, or by A, B, C, D, and it breaks it down into nice little charts that show us what percentage said yes, what percentage said no, that kind of thing, so we can track these results pretty easily. I will be putting a link on the town's website for the same survey instrument. That's a little bit, it has a few changes, being that it's from our perspective and not the chamber's perspective. And, and we'll keep that as an ongoing instrument and keep it going. What we've also done is some comparative analysis. I've looked at Prescott's Land Development Code, Prescott Valley's zoning code, Yavapai County's zoning ordinance, and a few more, some from jurisdictions around the country because we're looking at things like tying sign size to speed limit, which would make a lot of sense in a town where the, the main road is 45, but everybody drives 65. Nobody can see your sign when you're driving by, so we're looking at tying it to speed limit, and if, if you have a greater speed limit on a road, you get a greater sign size. That's, that's some of the stuff we're researching and seeing if that has played well in front of the courts and if it's worked out in the jurisdictions that have adopted it. And finally, I've been doing some in-office outreach. This is the, the most fun because I get to get yelled at for it. We had an ordinance that was passed in 2014 that allowed temporary sign permits for up to a year, and that actually expired on January 1st of this year. It was a temporary measure passed by town council. It was only meant to last until January 1st. It's over, and the business owners who have been coming in to renew their temporary sign permit have been told, "We don't do those anymore." We had a code that basically ran out, and for now, we are not actually enforcing those sign regulations because we don't have the bandwidth to do that in terms of staffing. So, some business owners have taken it upon themselves to leave their signs up. So, so we are using that as an opportunity to get them involved in the process and saying, you know, "We don't have it anymore. There is an upcoming change to the code. If you'd like to be involved in making that change, here's my card. Email me. We have a link on the town website that has not yet gone live, and we will be inviting participation by email, telephone, website, all that." So, that's my plan for the upcoming process, and here are some specific steps that we'll be taking. We'll continue the discussion and updating you at these P&amp;Z meetings. I'll have a brief update at every meeting, probably in the range of two to five minutes, just saying, "Here's what we did this month. Are there any questions?" I'll be disseminating the survey both via the Chamber of Commerce and on our town website. The survey is going out in March through, from the, the Chamber of Commerce, and I plan to time mine with that one as well so that we can kind of get a period of time that is equal to theirs. There is a plan to set up a sign code committee that would be staff-led. It would be a mix of business owners, private citizens, and anybody else who would like to be involved. As long as there's adequate interest, I'll be doing that. I'll probably just set one day a month aside and, and talk about the sign code for the whole day and, and see what comes of it. We'll see how that goes. I'm also going to be attending a Chamber of Commerce luncheon in May. That was the first one I could get on, believe it or not, and, and discussing the results of the survey, the results of our meetings, and what we plan on doing from there. I'm going to continue communication through email, phone, and by the website, as I mentioned, and our final steps will be adopting the changes through a public hearing at P&amp;Z and then at town council. So, here are the, some of the things we had to consider and will continue to consider. We'd like to increase the maximum sign sizes for businesses along the 89 corridor and probably along the arterials, meaning all of the mile streets. We were looking at roadway classification or speed for correlating with the sign size. So, an arterial road might get a, you know, one and a half square foot per linear foot allowance or something like that. And as we, as we get further into this, I'll show you what that might look like. I wanted to also think about minimum size requirements. If you look around town, we have some very small signs on Highway 89. It, it basically contributes to not being able to see without slowing down and almost becoming visual clutter and getting in your way as you're driving. So, I'd like to look at some minimums. I don't want to go crazy on that, so... The other things I was thinking about, considering, is how do we manage multiple signs on a single site? We have a lot of strip development here. We manage those currently by splitting it evenly between tenants. We might change it to requiring them all to be on one monument sign or something like that, just to, just to make the appearance of the highway a little less cluttered so you can, you can see things as you're driving. And finally, how are we going to manage those temporary signs? That's the big one. We have the added bonus of having town right-of-way and ADOT right-of-way. ADOT is generally pretty strict on temporary signage, which is really helpful to us. They, they require a long permit process. It's usually about 30 to 60 days just to get a permit for a sign in their right-of-way. So, so that has actually helped cut down on some of those temporary signs in the right-of-way. And, and that's all I had for you for this evening. Are there any questions on the upcoming process?
So, you guys are putting together a stakeholders committee to work on this?
I think we will, yeah. I think that's going to be one of the more important tools, as long as we can get enough participation.
Participation.
Yeah. And that's always a challenge when you're a government because you don't have a big advertisement budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, that's, that's our plan, and those will probably start in April.
Are you, excuse me, are you the contact person if someone is interested?
I am, yeah. And I didn't bring cards. I'm sorry. But if anybody needs me, come into the office Monday through Thursday, so...
Anybody else have any questions?
How, I do. How much, or if any, did you get any complaints after the newspaper article came out about the town council changing the signage kind of thing?
Um, we got the occasional business owner who was coming in to renew it, and, and they were a little upset when we told them that that was no longer happening, but we didn't get any calls or anything after that newspaper article, no.
Okay.
I think for the most part, those were known to be a temporary measure, and people are okay with it, yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing part of our meeting. Item 6A on the agenda is consideration of possible action to hold a public hearing to recommend adoption to the town council of the ordinance 16-814 to rezone approximately 2.31 acres of real property located at 868 Adams Drive, Chino Valley, Arizona, consisting of a portion of the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 15, township 16 North, range 02 West, Gila and Salt River Base and Meridian, Yavapai County, Assessor Parcel Number 306 20103, from SR 2.5, which is single-family residential, two and a half acre minimum, to SR 1, single-family residential, one acre minimum. Applicant is Jeb Merlin. Staff coordinator is James Gardner.
Thank you once again. I'll be presenting you a zoning case, 16-001. This is the subject property, shown in the vicinity of the surrounding properties. The arrow is pointing to the subject property. The existing home is in the southeast corner of the property, and the zoning map shows the, the zoning of the neighborhood around it. The sort of darker yellow color is our SR 2.5, which is the, the current zoning. The lighter yellow color, and forgive me, I'm colorblind, so I might be reversing them. The lighter color is single-family residential, one acre minimum, which is the proposed zoning. The, the red here is commercial light, and that's highway frontage. And the PL is public land use, and that's actually the ADOT, ADOT...
Storage yard.
Storage yard, exactly. So, that kind of gives you a context for where we're at. As stated, the request is from, to rezone a subject parcel from SR 2.5 to SR 1 in order to split the property as shown here on the proposed site plan. This dotted line is the proposed split. This is the proposed manufactured home to be installed. This here is a septic tank and leach lines. The septic tank has, has been installed, and once the applicant came to us to get a building permit, we informed him of the requirement to change zone. So, that's, that's how he ended up here. An existing home and mother-in-law quarters are on site currently, and proposed additions are an additional manufactured home. This is, this proposal is not strictly in conformance with the general plan. The general plan potential land use map shows a, a strip from one east to one west that's commercial or multifamily residential. That has to be taken with a grain of salt because we don't have the infrastructure along Highway 89 to fulfill that, especially the multifamily requirement. We don't have sewer and water there, so we don't see it becoming viable for multifamily residential for quite a while on Adams Drive. The next sewer and water extension is proposed down Perkinsville, which is to the south and won't serve this parcel. And with that, I end my show. If you have any questions for myself, I'm available. The applicant is also available for any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for James?
Can you go back to the plot plan, please?
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
James, it seems to me that the property surrounding all of that has, a lot of it happened...
Bless you.
Bless you. Has been zone one acre minimums around there.
That's correct, yeah. This matches fairly well with the surrounding neighborhood. The only area where it's still 2.5s is to the north, and that's accessed off of Road 3 North, so...
Would you go back one more?
Yes, I'd be happy to. To the vicinity map?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I see what I wanted to see on there. I was looking at a different person.
Oh, okay. All right, and back to the site plan for you, Annie.
Thank you.
In splitting this property, I understand he's going to share the well, the property will have a shared well?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we meet the 100-foot separation from the septic system to the well for the new part?
We do, or he would not be granted a septic permit.
Right, good.
Yeah.
All righty. Is there any questions for James?
I don't know.
Would Mr. Merlin like to come up and speak? If you, if you want to speak, you need to come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Jeb Merlin, and, well, that pretty much explains it. Just one acre, and the other side will probably be more like one and a quarter.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Merlin?
Is your intention to split the property and sell off that one acre?
Not right away. If the real estate market goes up, hard to say no sometimes. But for now, just either moving it or have a rental.
Is the mother-in-law house on one property or the other that you're going to split?
It will be on the property to the right.
To the right, yeah, I see it. Mm-hmm. Okay. So, possibly you could be renting that?
Um, I could be.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Merlin?
My only question is that the, the new septic tank that's already in place, does that meet the clearance for the existing well on the adjacent property?
Oh, yes. Yeah, the well is...
So, you, your, your septic tank was permitted by the county, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they check that clearance. That, that's fine.
It's probably...
No, that, that, that's fine. If it's been cleared through the county.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Merlin.
Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of this rezone from SR 2.5 to SR 1 for the, known as the Merlin Rezone at 868 Adams Drive.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next item on the agenda, 6B, consideration of possible action to recommend approval of ordinance 16-812, amending the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, Chapter 1, Administration and Procedures, Section 1.9, Review and Approval Processes, Subsection 1.9.5, Citizen Review Process, changing requirements for neighborhood meetings for the conditional use permits, zone changes and planned area developments in the town of Chino Valley to provide citizens with another opportunity to give comments regarding the proposed amendments. Staff report?
Thank you again. I have combined the, the proposed amendments into one PowerPoint again for sake of clarity. I'm just going to go over the whole thing that we did last time in order to give the public a chance to comment and hear everything we have to say. I'll, I'll speed through it if there's no objections.
No.
Okay. While I am in the UDO, it is a living document, and as we work with it, we understand what comes out of the regulations we put in place, and we like to adjust and account for that. In order to align it with the outcomes we would like to see, we occasionally change things that we have in there that seem to be a burden to private property owners and as well as staff. And we also like to see common sense in governance. It's rare, and we do our best. So, the proposed amendments are as shown on the screen. Section 1.9.5, Citizen Review Process, we're proposing some changes to the requirements for neighborhood meetings and putting some of the impetus on the applicant rather than staff being the lead in the neighborhood meeting process. We also have proposed amendments, which will be heard in the next item, in Section 4.2.2, which is the off-street parking section of the ordinance. I'll come back to those. So, how does our neighborhood meeting process compare to elsewhere? I wanted to do a little bit of comparative analysis on this so that you knew I wasn't coming up with these ideas out of nowhere and that we, we do plan on continuing a very open and... and that we do plan on continuing a very open and transparent process and giving neighbors and the public a chance to comment on applications. So I called around to some planners I know and asked them, what do you do for neighborhood meetings? So in Prescott Valley, they only hold neighborhood meetings for controversial topics. They are only present at those meetings when it's deemed necessary by the director of community development over there. And as a side note, they said that they like to hide in the back during those, so. I also called Prescott. The planner Frank Hall down there said he, the process is generally the same as above. Staff does attend and states that they are there only as an observer and gives that sort of disclaimer at the beginning of the meeting. In Yavapai County, neighborhood meetings are basically the exception to the rule. They don't hold neighborhood meetings unless, unless the Development Services Director deems it necessary. They're generally more rural than here, and if you hold a neighborhood meeting, you might be driving four hours and showing up and seeing no one there. So as a matter of practicality, they don't really hold those meetings. They're generally for bigger issues such as neighborhood plans and things like that. In Sedona, this is an interesting approach that we are not looking at doing, but I thought it was, I thought it was important to show that sometimes they are actually held prior to an application by the applicant. So they are held by the applicant prior to ever coming in for a conditional use permit or a zone change, and they've determined that that's a good way to weed out applications that may not make it through the process. If they hold a neighborhood meeting and find that all of the neighbors are in opposition, they're going to have a really hard time passing that through town council. So that's something that they did, and that's completed prior to staff ever being involved in the process. So to get to what we are proposing, I wanted to be clear that I understand that there is a sensitivity towards transparency and being involved in the process. I understand that there were past occurrences in Chino Valley where sometimes neighbors felt left out, and we don't want that again. I'll be clear on that. But the intent of the proposed change is basically to bring some level of flexibility to that process and some discretion from staff. I've been a professional in this for six or seven years now, and if you have some discretion, you can, you can definitely understand which ones do and don't require a lot of oversight, to put it nicely. So, so we will use our professional judgment if this is granted and we'll be at the ones that we need to be at. That's guaranteed, so. Let's look at what we currently have. I'm not going to read this all out loud. It's pretty long, but I'll paraphr- paraphrase. The zoning administrator currently consults with the applicant, establishes a time, date, and place for the meeting, and says that you need to be there from 6:00 to at least 6:30 if nobody is present. If there are members present, you are there until the meeting's over, and that's currently how we pursue it. Gary showed me in our application packet, we actually have an application packet that says 4:00 to 5:00 PM, which is not actually how we do it. So that needs to be updated. In the proposed language, I will read. And it says, "The applicant, upon consultation with the zoning administrator, shall establish a time, date, and place for the neighborhood meeting that provides a reasonable opportunity for the applicant to inform adjacent landowners and other potentially affected citizens of the substance of the proposed action, and adjacent landowners of, and other potentially affected citizens will be provided an opportunity to express any issues or concerns that they may have with the proposed zoning or change of zoning and/or, or use permit proposed by the application before the public hearing. The citizen review meeting shall be held not less than five days prior to the public hearing on the application. The zoning administrator or his or her designee may attend the meeting but is not required to conduct the meeting. The applicant or his/her designee shall submit a written report of the outcomes of the meeting to the zoning administrator, who shall include them in reports to the commission and town council at such time as they take action on the application." And I wanted to go over some of the possible effects of the proposed language. The applicant must now hold the neighborhood meeting and must report the results of that meeting to the zoning administrator and/or the designee, which we'll call the ZA. The ZA no longer would be required to attend neighborhood meetings, but would of course be allowed to attend those meetings. This is to encourage free discussion of the proposed project at those neighborhood meetings without the perception that the town is there to support the application, whether or not that's actually the case. And you asked me last time to include a draft affidavit in your packets. I did do that, and it's before all of the rezoning, PAD packets, and CUP packets. I don't think there's a page on it where I would direct you there. Okay. It's right after your rezoning. Staff report. And I can bring this up and pass it around if you're having a hard time finding yours. But essentially, this is a very rough draft. I wanted to put it together in time for this meeting. But it basically is an affidavit that says that they did hold the neighborhood meeting. They've submitted a report about that neighborhood meeting, and everything in that report is true and accurate and complete. I am working on some changes to it as we speak to make it a little more inclusive of details. So I held the meeting at this time, I ended the meeting at this time, and this many people were in attendance, things like that. But this is a draft of what one might look like and would be inserted in our packets.
So in this draft, it would maybe have a space to say how many people showed up and that sort of business?
Yeah, and that was a suggestion made by Amy, which is really great. Thank you, Amy. And I, I fully support that, and I think that's a great idea. I think the more information we can get on this little affidavit, the better. So start time and end time, location, number of attendees, and the reference to the complete and true report.
So this affidavit of the meeting report isn't necessarily the complete report? It's just a statement that the meeting was held, and this is some of the outcomes?
That's correct. It's a statement that they have held the meeting, and they've submitted a report. And the report, as we discussed last time, we were thinking about maybe a template for that report, but we are steering towards allowing them to write their own report and be creative about it, in the extent to which they can be.
And you would be able to, when they turn the report in, review it, and then ask for more details if it didn't seem very complete?
That's correct, yeah. And, and the reason we were steering clear of a template is sometimes neighborhood meetings go in a different direction than you planned, and you can't really cover that in a template, so. Yeah, that was our plan for this.
Could you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yes, sir. The proposed language?
Down on the bottom half where you say zoning administrator or his/her designee may attend the meeting but is not required to conduct the meeting, you might want to say, "but will not conduct the meeting", rather than "but is not required to conduct".
I think that makes sense.
Because you're, you're trying to have the applicant do the work, so it should be clear that if we have a designee there, they're not going to conduct the meeting.
I think that's great.
Just, just an idea.
That's a great suggestion. I will.
Good suggestion.
Make note of it, definitely.
I can see some times when the zoning administrator or the designee would, would have to help in preparing the meeting. Running a meeting is a complicated thing for a lot of people. And I think if "will not conduct" is really too harsh. I think there has to be some flexibility there.
Okay, I think that's.
Can we word it so that, that the onus is put on the person hosting the meeting? Maybe some support by the administrator or their designee to keep the flow of the meeting moving, but.
That'd be good.
I'm with Claude. Some people just wouldn't have a clue on how to run a meeting, get flustered, and all of a sudden the thing falls apart. It'd be nice to have somebody there to facilitate, not necessarily run it, but just kind of coach them along. I don't know how we can word that, but.
Could you, I think the way it's worded now, we could conduct the meeting or we could facilitate the meeting, we are just not required to do so.
Maybe we say it is not intended for the zoning administrator to conduct the meeting. It is not intended for them to conduct the meeting and leave it at that, then they still could if they had to.
Or if deemed necessary.
Yeah.
Could you, could you use the word discretion? The staff persons, at the staff person's discretion, they could assist?
We could. I, I think actually the language as written allows us to do all of those things, and we don't need to.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't need to get into the minute details of.
Well, I don't know if we can cover all the details anyway, so.
Exactly. So I think it allows us to do so if we use our discretion and do so.
Okay, that's a good point there.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions regarding particulars here, but I do have some questions on the checklist. Is that a different, that would be a different topic, but relating to this. And I would just ask that on, I've noticed that the items here on the checklist really are not listed in the code, correct, James?
Which checklist are you referring to?
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit.
It's on the other side of that same form.
Oh, okay. Perfect. And I think we're getting into muddy waters about what we may or may not be able to talk about, because this is not a, not an item that's on the agenda. But these are our current conditional use permit packets. So go ahead and ask your question.
Well, the question I had is, the staff, for instance, say I'm a business owner and want to open up a business in an existing building along Highway 89, and the conditional use permit is required. And there are certain instances along, that they're required. It's an existing building. Why would I have to submit building elevations? Would that be a stiff requirement, or did the staff say, well, look, it's an existing building, just take a photograph of the building and submit that?
We generally do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're pretty lenient on this kind of stuff. We require what we need to get through the process. And if we, we deem only two copies necessary or we deem it unnecessary for them to have building elevations, that's completely something that we'd look at during.
So that's handled at the pre-application conference.
It generally is, yeah, which we call the tech review, yeah?
Okay.
And a lot of, a lot of our applications that come to you have gone through tech review. Not all, but most of them. And staff policy has been to ramp up those meetings and try to get more of the applications that reach you through that process prior to this, so that once you get it here, we've addressed a lot of the technical concerns.
Okay. Another question I have is preliminary planned area development supplemental requirements, and that would be the same for Platts as well, where it says, for instance, on preliminary, well, let me just go to Platts. That was my bigger concern. Is that before preliminary planned area development, or have, let's see?
I believe it's all in the same application.
Well, I should have tapped it before I came here.
You're getting there, you're getting there.
Okay, I'm getting there.
How come yours is in color?
I printed mine at my office.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to go from memory, I don't want to take everyone's time here.
Okay.
But, oh, well, thank you. I'm somewhat concerned of how much leeway staff has. For instance, preliminary Platt development requirements, they're supposed to submit 14 copies of the landscape plan, 14 copies of the outdoor lighting plan. And as a planner, if you're following the stiff requirements, you can require that everybody, and a lot of planners have. And what they, what they do, I'm finding out, these plans go into nowhere land, and they're just thrown away, you know? And, and I used to tell applicants, for instance, just submit two copies, the landscape plan. One goes to engineering, one goes to us, and we keep the one. But who, who's all interested in the landscape plan?
That's a great question. This is, again, one of our existing forms. So I don't think that we're supposed to be changing it right now, but.
Well, I'm not saying this is at staff discretion, but do you tell people, for instance, I look at, the phone companies aren't interested in the landscape plan.
No, neither is the cable company, yeah, most of these are.
Water resources, unless, you know, they're not going to comment on the plant selection, they're just going to not comment at all. So I would just, just as a consideration, ask staff to look at reducing the amount of paperwork that's required of applicants.
Absolutely.
Because big companies just do it. But for the small communities I've worked in, wow, that's a lot of paperwork.
That is a lot of paperwork, and I have not actually looked much at the PAD application because we haven't had any come in.
Well, that'd be same for the Platt as well.
Yeah.
When all these required for the Platt, and I'm thinking, and I, for instance, I'm looking mainly at the landscape plan and even some other instances where all these agencies do not have to receive it. They just get flooded with the paperwork, and as a previous planner, my before life, we never heard from them anyhow.
Yeah, that's, that's typically what happens with us, too.
So, for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions on the conditional use? Are the, we're on the neighborhood meeting report affidavit, are we good with that? Okay, James.
Okay, great. And this is a public hearing and voting.
Okay, so we're, so we need to vote on this now?
Yes.
And move to the next item?
That's correct, thank you very much.
I would entertain a motion to accept this affidavit with some modification as discussed.
I still recommend.
I'm, I'm going to interrupt you, I'm sorry. The vote is on the UDO amendments, which is the ordinance number 18-16-812.
Okay, so we need, we can't just vote on, we're voting on the whole packet here?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the entire Ordinance 16-812.
I recommend approval of Ordinance 16-812.
As.
I move to second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? And in the motion, I would like to have the words "as written" in that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to item C. Consideration and possible action to recommend approval. Consideration and possible action to recommend approval of ordinance sixteen dash eight, one, three to the town council amending the unified development ordinance, chapter four, general regulations, section four, point two-two off-street parking and loading, subsection four point two-two point five, parking standards for non-residential and mixed uses, subsections four point two-two point five E, joint use parking for P A Ds, and subsection four point two-two point eight, determination of required parking by deleting the subsections B and H, and renumbering the remaining subsections to conform and amending the table. These proposed amendments include expansion of joint use parking to non-planned area development uses, which is subsection four point two-two point five E, removal of maximum parking requirements, and removal of requirements for recreational vehicle parking at apartment and condominium complexes.
Okay, thank you for that one. That one's a mouthful.
Lead us through the jungle here.
(laugh) Okay, um...
Four, two, two, rounds.
Um, we're looking at our, uh, our parking standards, that's section four point two-two. Um, we'll be looking at, as, uh, Mr. Merritt so kindly stated, our joint use parking, um, code, our, um, required parking section, and, uh, removing some requirements by deleting those, and looking at our required parking table in order to remove R V parking requirements from apartment and condominium complexes. Um, the first one we'll be looking at is section four point two-two point five E, um, joint use parking for P A Ds. Uh, what we'd like to do is extend the possibility of joint use parking agreements to uses that are outside of P A Ds. Currently, um, if an applicant, if an applicant, um, can demonstrate through a parking study supplied by the applicant and approved by our department, um, that the peak parking demand for those uses is at different times of day, um, and the total parking, uh, then the total parking required can be reduced for each use served by that parking agreement. Um, a reduction in spaces would then be allowed. What we'd like to do is, um, amend this section by removing the words, uh, "for P A D" from the title of the section, and just calling the section "joint use parking," and, um, removing the language "for a mixed use P A D," so it would read, "if an applicant can demonstrate through a parking study supplied by the applicant and approved by the development services director or his or her designee, that the peak parking demand for the joint uses will be less than the sum of the parking spaces required for each use served, a reduction in spaces may be allowed." This still requires the applicant to submit a parking study to us, um, and we still have the right to approve that or disapprove it, um, and one of the things that you aren't seeing on this part of the screen is, um, we also can revoke that joint use parking agreement at any time if the use intensifies or changes. So, um, if, for some reason, a business becomes extremely popular and their parking is just eating up all of the parking lot, we can take a look at that and revoke that joint use parking agreement and require more parking out of them in the future. At our last meeting, uh, Mr. Bacon suggested that I look at some of the Prescott, um, joint use parking agreements, and I went ahead and did that, and, um, I think as a matter of internal policy, I'll probably be using that as a template because it's, it's really great, um, so, um, it has some language protecting both parties as well as the town, um, so I'll be using that going forward as a template. The effect of the proposed amendment would basically extend the same rights to uses outside of a P A D, um, and as we talked about, something like a breakfast restaurant and a bar and grill that operate at completely opposite ends of the time spectrum, uh, wouldn't have to provide parking separately for each of those uses. Uh, we'll move on to the next one, section four point two-two point eight, um, B and H. These paragraphs both provide for maximum parking, um, and they both provide for, uh, a different amount of maximum parking, and, as I said, we've, we've had several professionals come in and tried to determine what this means, um, including all of our staff and including engineering staff, and, and nobody really understands what it is referring to. Um, and in our, our combined experience, no applicant has ever asked for a lot more parking. I can see at maybe a, a small strip mall asking for ten spaces instead of just five, um, and this would not allow us to do that currently. It would not allow us to approve doubling the amount of spaces on a small parking use like that, um, but what we propose is striking that language. We would renumber all of the other, uh, items as, as necessary. Um, basically, we believe that, um, a maximum, a maximum number of parking spaces is not really a necessary provision in a U D O, um, primarily because the market allows for, uh, the market dictates how much parking business owners want to, to put in there. If you have a small, a small, uh, parcel and you have a, a business and you, you do not want to cover the whole thing in parking, it vastly increases the amount of overhead you have, um, in each project. So, um, this is an example, uh, that I mentioned last time. If a business owner wanted to provide seven spaces for her customers, but the minimum is five, under our current code, we actually don't know whether or not we can approve that. We have approved that, but, um, we're not sure we're doing it correctly, so, um, uh, and, like I said, if she wanted to have ten, we could not approve that. So, that basically just prevents us from having the maximum. And as I said at our last meeting, all of these applicants, especially for commercial projects, go through technical review, um, and we talk to them about what is an appropriate amount of parking. We do still have the minimum in place, of course, and, um, if they're providing double the minimum and they're providing two hundred spaces instead of one hundred, it's gonna raise some red flags, and we'll have that discussion with them in the technical review process which proceeds this process. And with that, I'll move on to the table. This one kind of gave us a little heartburn last time because it's a little confusing. I think I've addressed some of those changes in the proposed language I have now. We are looking at the required parking spaces table. Um, I'm just showing them the multiple, uh, residence section of that table. The table's several pages long, so I'm just showing you the pertinent sections. It has efficiencies, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and they all have their required number of parking spaces, and the language now reads "all apartment complexes with five or more units." And then, um, the minimum standard for that is "the above number of spaces per unit plus one additional guest space per tw- ten dwelling units." That, um, I believe clarifies how much they're required, instead of just having one parking space per, uh, ten units, um, as we were, we were thinking you could read it last time, so I believe that clarifies it. Um, and we've removed the language that says "shall provide recreational parking." It used to be "one recreational vehicle space per ten, um, units," which would lead a forty unit apartment complex to have four R V spaces. Um, a hundred would have ten R V spaces, so they would have essentially an R V park on site. Um, we've also done the same with condominium and townhome complexes. Um, anything with five or more uses shall have an additional guest space per ten dwelling units, and, um, no requirement for an R V space. Um, and this is, we discussed some of the reasons why, um, we don't want to have R V spaces at apartment complexes last time. I thought it might be helpful to discuss these again. Requiring R V parking is a burden to property managers in a number of ways. Enforcing a time limit for R Vs, uh, can be problematic. Removal of the R V from the premise upon the expiration of that time limit can be problematic. Um, it's a little unclear whether the landlord-tenant act covers this. Monitoring the R V to make sure they're not living in it, or inviting others to live in it with them on their apartment complex site. And, um, expenditure for the pavement of the actual spots, but also for widening all turning radii within the site, um, and all of the travel lanes to accommodate R Vs. Most of these won't be, um, widened just for R Vs because there is a requirement for, um, fire apparatus to be able to travel through, but in some cases, um, depending on the layout of hydrants on site, um, a fire, a fire vehicle may be able to reach everything, and you would still have to increase the, the travel lane for R Vs, so, um, that does become extremely costly. And with that, that's the end of my presentation on section four point two-two, uh, parking requirements. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Anybody have any questions for James?
I have one on, on this ordinance. You mentioned that there was a clause where if it was necessary, we could require additional parking. I couldn't find it in this ordinance.
Um, we can only require a minimum amount of parking. We, um, currently have a maximum allowed. Yeah, we can't, we can't require more than the minimum.
Okay. This was under where you were discussing the joint use parking.
Uh, okay. So, um, we can, we can, um, remove the minimum in this case? By allowing them, for example, instead of having thirty spots, they could have twenty spots if, uh, their parking study deemed that, um, reasonable, and we accepted that parking study.
But that would mean that the ten spaces that were removed could, were being used by the other business.
Um...
Now, the, to, to, to clarify, you said joint use study, you agree with the study, and then if the uses change, or if the parking gets congested, you could require additional spaces?
Yes.
And then you said, "But it's not written in here."
It's not written in our presentation, it's written in our U D O as, as written now.
So, it's, it's, it's in the U D O?
Yeah, and it's not written up here because I'm not proposing any changes to it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it was somewhere.
Yes, yes, it's currently in there, and, and we can require that.
Because trying to get them to put additional parking spaces in is, is a tough call because they may not have the space anywhere.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, um, I don't think that, um, the way that they'll lay these out is, um, basically, they're going to have all of the space, um, when they come to us, because they're gonna, they're gonna, um, account for all of that in their, um, plans as they go forward, and if they want to ask us to reduce the number of parking spaces, we, we can accommodate that, but, um, they would still have the amount of space on site that would be necessary for that if we were to change the requirements on them later.
So, they might make it landscaping and then have to take it out later?
Exactly, yep, exactly.
Ri- rather than additional square footage for building?
Exactly, yep. Yeah, we wouldn't do that because you're never gonna get them to demolish the front four hundred feet of their building, and you don't want to do that.
Just checking.
Yeah.
So, they will always have to have available the mini, minimum parking spaces, whether they're designated that way or not?
So, they would be, um, they would be required to have the space available for those parking spaces. Um, each parking space is about a hundred and eighty square feet, is that right? It's, they're usually nine by twenty or nine.
Nine by twenty, you're right.
Yeah, so that's a hundred and eighty square feet per space. Let's say we're reducing the amount of parking required by ten spaces, that's eighteen hundred square feet that they will have to have on site, um, probably as landscaping, um, we, we may not make them landscape it, but it would be required to be available.
So, this is, the traffic study is before the business is open?
Um, these are typically done as part of a big complex of businesses. For example, Safeway might do something like this, um, and, and say, "We don't want that sea of parking out front, how can we reduce that?" Um, so they would do the traffic study before the business was ever open, yeah. And, and actually, that is the case for all of them now that I think of it, because we have to approve their site plan prior to, uh, issuing a certificate of occupancy, so, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Uh, just a simple question. I hope I didn't bring this up before, 'cause I don't remember if I did or not.
Okay, no worries.
Uh, on the last one, why was guest space taken out? Because, uh, on the table?
Um, on the apartment complexes?
It's the same type of space, uh, but we're just changing the name as you relate one's apartments and one's condo.
Oh, okay, they both say guest, so they both have guest removed, and I think, um, our attorney was thinking that having it on there twice might be redundant, I'm not actually sure why it doesn't say guest space, but, um, it doesn't really matter what we call the space, yeah.
It doesn't matter, but I was just wondering why we took out guest on one and left it in for the other.
Yeah. I'm not actually sure, to be honest.
Well, we're expecting you to tell us at the next one.
(laugh) You got it.
All right, any more discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I recommend, uh, approval of ordinance sixteen dash eight, one, three to the end, forwarded to the town council.
Second.
Motion and a second? Need discussion? Again, maybe with the wordage "as written."
Okay.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um, non-public action hearing items, does anybody have anything to bring up with that?
I don't think so.
I have a question, and I'm sure it's a dumb one, so... James, you mentioned that the parking study would be done before the business is open?
Yes.
How does one do that? If there's no business there to do a study on?
They would determine which types of businesses they would like to have there, um, and traffic engineers are, uh, are good at working magic, so, um...
Okay.
What they do is, um, do a destination and, oh my gosh, I'm forgetting this, it's been a while since school, um...
I, I can help you with that.
Yes, oh, this is great.
I, I work with Department of Transportation in Maricopa County, and, you know, if you say it's gonna be a medical building, they can determine how many patients you're gonna be seeing there.
Okay.
If it's, if it's gonna be a convenience store, they can say, "Okay, this time of day you have a lot of traffic, this time of day you don't," and they, they can basically lay it out based on the square footage of the building and the use. And they have books that go on and on and on.
So, they're, these are industry standards?
Yeah.
That have been established for a long time? That's why I need to know, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't answer that better.
Any other non-hearing items? How about discussion items? Anybody have any of those? I'd go for public comments, but it looks a little dry out there.
Absolutely.
I'd, uh, offer to have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.